Good evening. The regular meeting of the Annapolis City Council for Monday, April the 3rd will be called to order at 7:05 PM. At this time, would everyone willing and able, please stand for the invocation given by Orderwoman Finlayson, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, I come to you thanking you and praising you for the great gifts of our city. I ask for your continued blessings for the residents and the citizens of this city. Herefore, I pray to your family in making laws that are just for all of us, regardless of rights, gender, socialized, non-identity status, or partial community. Teach us the spirit and value of cooperation and compromise, so that we might create laws and programs that will make a positive difference in the lives of all of our citizens. Please give us the courage, the endurance, and the will. These are my blessings, I ask for your mercy.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor, panel ladies?
Present.
Alderman Budge?
Here.
Alderman Peon?
Present.
Orderwoman Pendell Charles?
Present.
Alderman Finlayson?
Present.
Alderman Littman?
Present.
Alderman Kirby?
Present.
Alderman Pfeifer?
Present.
Alderman Arnett?
Here.
Madam City Attorney, would you please present our first item?
Mr. Mayor, the first item on the agenda is the State of the City Address.
What a great opportunity it has been to serve as your mayor for these past three years. Together, we took a financially distressed city three years ago and made some tough decisions, and we made sure we put our city back on solid financial footing. Our efforts resulted in two upgrades to the city's bond rating in the past three years. I saw a real need to stop the city's financial hemorrhaging and get us back on track so we could recoup the money. We were losing to poor choices and bad policies. There was a better way to run the city, so we came up with better choices and stronger policies. With bipartisan support, we got rid of the excesses, reorganized city government, and got comfortable with doing more with less. I give my department directors a great deal of credit when it comes to doing more with less. Is there largely due for the work that took place? Would you all please stand and be recognized? Tonight, I am submitting a $107.5 million budget. This budget is $4.2 million increase over last year's budget, and I'm here to tell you that the state of the city is strong. This budget includes a tax rate cut, new hires in our police department, reintroducing a 1 percent poll for employees subject to collective bargaining, more money for sidewalks and repaving projects, and a decrease in the city's solid waste fee. More on those items to come in just a few minutes, but before we look ahead, let's take a moment to look back at what we have accomplished. Three years ago, I promised we would spend within our means, and we have done that. We were able to lower the solid waste fees each year for a total of 31.25 percent over the past three years. We've maintained the city's AA+ bond rating from Fitch and Standard &amp; Poor's, with the Moody's Investor Service giving us an upgrade because of our strong financial management. We balanced three budgets resulting in a surplus each year, and we passed three budgets with no increase in the real property tax rate. With the help of the city council, we have accomplished much in the past three years due largely to bipartisan support. I want to thank the council for their ongoing commitment and dedication to our residents in helping me to promote our priorities, which include financial stability, public safety, environmental sustainability, economic development, and putting Anapolitans first. The first topic we're going to discuss tonight is more about financial stability for our city. One of the first priorities was to replenish the fund balance to a healthy level. Once we accomplished that, I looked for innovative ways to secure new funding resources. At my request, the fire department secured a SAFER grant, which allowed us to hire 12 additional firefighters in the city. Last year, we secured $1 million from Governor Larry Hogan for flood mitigation to help address long-term flooding in the city, and we also received $345,000 from the governor for our Capitol Safe Streets funding, which is double the annual amount of our allocation. I recently asked the governor for an additional increase in our pilot program, which is payment of lieu of taxes, and we're still in great need of funding to meet our basic obligations of public safety and basic public works since we're the state capital of Maryland. We're still working in the governor and general assembly and will hope to find that spending in the upcoming budget. I pledge that the city will continue to be financially responsible, and our programs and policies will continue to address the needs of our residents. On to public safety. Back at my inauguration in 2013, I made a pledge to focus on finding solutions to drug abuse and crime. I've listened to the needs of the community and over the past three years have made sure that our public safety is adequately funded. I made a pledge to find solutions to the heroin epidemic and related drug abuse in Annapolis. The city continues to work with Governor Larry Hogan, County Executive Steve Schu, to make sure this is one of the top priorities for our law enforcement teams. Meanwhile, the Annapolis Police Department and I remain active on the County Executive Heroin Task Force and are committed to keeping our children and citizens safe from these dangerous drugs and the terrible consequences that they affect on all of our families, with the goal to get these criminals out of our neighborhoods and out of our city. I'm also working with our state's attorney, Wes Adams, to better coordinate our police officers' presence in the courtroom so we can keep officers on the street and protecting our citizens. Most recently, I made a change with the Annapolis Police Department because I saw criminals, while I saw criminals being arrested, I wanted to see more aggressive steps to prevent crimes from occurring. An update on our police chief search, we have received 72 applications for the chief of police. We formed a blue ribbon panel who will interview the top 10 candidates and in turn be recommending the final four, the city manager, Tom Aiders, and I, to be interviewed. Meanwhile, I've secured the most money ever from the state for our Safe Streets program with ongoing funds directly into our policing efforts. I requested $125,000 to be transferred to the police department for additional security cameras in and around Hacka Properties. I requested, and the city council approved, $1.25 million for additional police officers, additional security cameras around the city for this year. While funding sources are secured, I want to report that the Annapolis Police Department seized a record number of handguns this year, and we implemented a body-worn camera program and just recently selected Taser as a provider firm with the delivery to begin in early May and deploying the cameras through mid-May. While we know that more police and security cameras won't in themselves solve the problem, so we made changes to the housing authority by nominating new commissioners. Under this new leadership, Hacka has a new banning policy and a stronger cooperation with the community. Allowing the criminals to sell drugs and frequent the communities is no longer acceptable, and we will work diligently to make sure every community is safe no matter where your zip code is. On to environmental sustainability. I understand the need for environmental guidance and the importance of making environmental sustainability a focus for future generations, and that is why the city council passed a forest conservation ordinance supported by local environmentalists. We implemented Annapolis' first conservation easement since 2003, adding 2.5 acres of conservation easement on the Bay Village assisted living property. We created a watershed improvement plan to meet the federal requirements and we're working with the South River Federation, the Spock Creek Conservancy, the Chesapeake Conservancy, the Department of Natural Resources, and we have started numerous stormwater restoration projects in our city. On to environment, on to economic development. As mayor, I'm trying to offer new ways to breathe life into our downtown area. The old Foster Building has started construction after sitting vacant for years. Mission BBQ moved into the old Stevens Hardware Building. All of this was taking place while vibrant changes were occurring in West Annapolis, Eastport, Upper West Street. Other economic highlights in the city include opening or expanding 403 businesses in the past three years, reorganizing government to streamline development review inspections and the permitting process, reaffirming our commitment to the maritime industry, right sizing government's role in economic development by sharing resources with the county and creating an economic development manager within the city manager's office. We launched an Economic Development Strategic Action Plan, which contains a roadmap for Annapolis' economic development efforts. The city dock bulkhead work was done on time and under budget. Meanwhile, finding a place to park quickly and efficiently is part of that experience. That's why last year, I signed with the council's approval, a contract with SP Plus to comprehensively manage all of the city's parking operations and to modernize the parking system. Recently, SP Plus has installed multi-space metering equipment downtown, enabling a more efficient payment and enforcement system using the license plate as the credential, implemented mobile payments, you can pay by your phone, for on-street parking and meter spaces throughout the city. This feature affords users more choices and an easy parking experience. We added a second vehicle and upgraded license plate recognition technology for an accurate reading of license plates on vehicles that have been parked illegally in residential permit parking districts. We implemented an online permit parking program, allowing residents to purchase their annual parking permits online. There are no changes to the permit price and all the major credit cards are accepted. This is a great feature so the citizens don't have to come to City Hall every time they want to renew. An upgraded system and process will be introduced for residential permit renewals in June 2017. On to putting Anapolitans first. Means putting the needs of our residents in the forefront as we can only achieve that through listening. Some of the recent items that have been a direct impact on residents include passing a school adequate facilities ordinance to help eliminate overcrowding, hiring an African-American and Hispanic liaison, community specialists, to ensure that all the voices are represented within our government, creating the first Hispanic bilingual television program that is aired on both city TV and on our website, working with Maryland Live Casino to bring 150 immediate jobs to the Annapolis area, to that facility, and I would note that when we had that job fair, 20 people were hired on the spot, working with Orderwoman Rhonda Pendell Charles to host the second annual job fair at the Pitt Moyer Recreation Center, insisting that all public housing units were inspected to ensure that all rental properties across the city are held to the same standard, offering the same quality of life for all of our residents, nominating new members to the Housing Authority of the City of Annapolis, which now represents the needs of the board, including a strong legal presence, someone with vast professional business focus, a financial expert, and an independent thinker who is a skilled community leader. What our residents don't always see is we're working hard to accomplish these goals behind the scenes and moving forward to keep everything successful. We've contracted with ACOM to develop three flood mitigation initiatives. These designs will address nuisance flooding in downtown due to tidal fluctuations. We've conducted community outreach to the downtown residents and business owners impacted by flooding and complete a final engineering project. Recently, I walked door to door, talking to each business along Dock Street to request data that we needed to submit for a FEMA grant that was applied for. The submission package is about 175 pages and includes 16 appendices in addition to a 40-slide PowerPoint presentation. As you can tell, we put a lot of hard work into making sure we get this grant. The city could provide, could provide the city with $3 million of the 10 million we need to implement the critical equipment that will minimize nuisance flooding in the downtown historic area. In the next few months, we will have a demonstration that has been used successfully in Baton Rouge and New York City to provide flood protection. We are ready to start construction on the Annapolis Renewable Energy Park after the County Board of Education voted unanimously to purchase the power from the city. The energy park at the old landfill is environmentally, financially, and economically rewarding and will bring jobs to the area while supporting local businesses with an anticipated revenue of $5 million to the city over the next 20 years. Also important is that this will become the new standard and others will follow as Anarondo County, Anarondo County Schools, and the City of Annapolis advance compliance with the state mandatory renewable energy goals for local governments. You soon, you will soon see the first of 54,000 solar panels being installed on the old landfill. This project, when complete, will be the largest solar project identified by the Environmental Protection Agency exclusively installed on a closed landfill in the United States. So moving on, so what's new in this budget and what you will see? The first thing, you will see a half-cent tax rate cut. The second thing you'll see is 10 new police officers. You'll see $1 million for stormwater and stream restoration projects and our capital budget in addition to the fee. There'll be a 1 percent poll increase for all employees, subject to collective bargaining, which will begin on January 1st, along with a provision for healthcare and pension benefits. And I'm reducing the solid waste fee another 22 percent for a grand total of 46.3 percent over the past four years in dollars and cents. This means the average solid waste bill over the course of the last four years will have been reduced from $380 to $204 per household per year. In conclusion, this budget is fair and allows us to move into the future without losing our historic appeal as we continue to build on our successes, and some of those include opening a new water treatment plant this year. The water production and the startup test phase of the project is underway and is expected that this will be completed by the end of April. The current progress schedule shows the contractor completing the remaining work in late August or early September 2017. We will begin the reconstruction of Main Street in 2018. We will be building a new pool with the proceeds from the sale of the Eisenhower Golf Course. We'll be spending $2 million to repay roads and sidewalks in the City of Annapolis, and we will be updating bathroom facilities in the Harbor Masters Building, and we will be rehabbing the Truxton Park tennis courts. This budget takes into consideration the needs of our city as well as the priorities I have defined as your mayor. I'm proud to say that we have made great strides forward during the past three years to ensure that we remain financially strong, economically resilient, and environmentally sustainable while making sure we address the needs of Anapolitans. This year, I will continue to rely on our residents' input through my open-door sessions. And call, please, call, write, or email me and attend the city council meetings so we can hear from you. It's a major source of what we learn to shape and implement our policies in the city. I will work diligently to fulfill our obligations on the environment while promoting a business-friendly climate and promote smart land use. And above all, the city will continue to offer high-quality services to our residents no matter what their street address is and endorse public safety initiatives to ensure Anapolitans are safe within our city limits. Thank you for sharing this evening with me and the opportunity to serve as your mayor. Thank you, and God bless. Madam City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is the approval of agenda.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to amend the agenda to add the swearing-in of two police officers and to the reconsideration of O-1217, the compensation for the mayor, orderpersons, and city manager.
Second?
Is there any discussion? Alderman Budge?
Do we also need to amend the agenda for the swearing-in of the directors who were being confirmed tonight?
It's on the consent calendar.
The swearing-in?
Give some to say?
What's that?
Did you have a comment?
No, but we need to make sure we approve them before we swear them in.
So we can do the swearing-in after the approval?
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Madam City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
The next item on the agenda is city council citations, Annapolis Film Festival.
Swearing in two officers.
Oh, okay. The next?
Alderman Littman?
I didn't hear you very well, so I'm not sure what you said.
I'm just saying that that's the next item on the agenda because of the email that we received that there were going to be some citations to the, to members of the Annapolis Film Festival.
Right. I propose that we, the city issue citations to those two leaders, and I was told that tonight probably would not be a good night to do that, to make them come back after a busy weekend, that we should do it on the next city council meeting.
I'm sorry, I didn't get that message.
That's all right. We'll move on to the swearing-in of the two new officers. If they could join me at the front, please? They're not here, right? Just a quick scan, no? What's that? I don't know, I thought much about how you. This is one of the fun parts of the job, when you get to bring in two new police officers to our city. I've had the pleasure to do this many times over my tenure, and one of the traditions we started about last year is introducing them to the public because these are the ones that are going to be protecting us. We wanted everyone to have a chance to see them and thank them publicly. So we will do the swearing-in. If you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name. Do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland and support the Constitution and laws thereof, and that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment, diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice, execute the office of police officer according to the Constitution and laws of this state and the Charter and Code of the City of Annapolis. Congratulations. Welcome on board. Do you want to just say your name and where you're from?
Officer Ferguson. I'm from, I live in Maryland. I used to work in Washington, DC.
Jacob Warner. I'm from over on the Bronnik Peninsula. Worked in Virginia recently.
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is petitions, reports, and communications, beginning with reports by committees.
Is there any order person that would like to present a report? Alderman Littman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to highlight for my colleagues at the Environmental Matters Committee meeting on April 20th at 1:30, I've asked Director Gutwall to do a presentation on the Forest Drive sector study. This is a sector study that directly affects four wards and probably indirectly affects the other four, so if you have an interest in this topic, I'd invite you to attend. I've asked Director Gutwall to help spell out what the expected deliverables will be, what the expected timeline of including the community, what community groups, and how those community groups will be included. In essence, I'm expecting a robust plan and to achieve a result where we have a plan that actually is actionable, it's not just a plan that sits on the shelf. So as it affects most of the city, I'd invite your participation.
Any else? Alderman Pfeifer?
Mr. Mayor, the Finance Committee will meet at noon tomorrow in this room to deal with a number of small legislative issues and housekeeping items, but it will, as is our tradition, is the first meeting after the delivery of the State of the City. It will be the meeting where we set the schedule for consideration of your budget. And obviously, you know, and for the benefit of the folks in the room and people watching at home, the, the annual process is basically that the mayor makes his speech, he outlines the themes, the administration delivers to us the actual line item budget of how they intend to deliver on those promises that he laid out tonight, and then the Finance Committee, as well as the rest of the members of the council, often through a series of meetings with the department heads and with folks, with input from folks in the community, try to figure out how to take those, that rhetoric and turn it into reality and deliver a budget that can be passed by the majority of this council. And that is the, as I always say, the, the one thing that we have to do every year as a council in the next two months. So we, we will share those information. We always encourage people to come out and certainly to, to follow the process, even though it is sometimes somewhat arcane, but as, as we work through amendments, work through ideas, work through the, the things that drive the budget and get into it in a lot more detail than we did tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Pan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Economic Matters Committee will be meeting on April 17th, right here in the chamber's chamber?
April 10th.
I'm sorry?
April 10th.
April 10th, okay. I had the 17th, I'm sorry. It hasn't been changed on the city calendar. Okay, April 10th, at 6:30 PM, immediately after the Public Safety Committee meeting on that same date. We will consider legislation at that time and other pending matters. It's open to the public, and I would certainly invite the public to come in and participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Orderwoman Finlayson?
Yes, thank you. And I apologize to Alderman Peon, but our calendars are not syncing, so they have different dates. But the Public Safety Committee will have its next meeting on April 10th at 5 o'clock here in Council Chambers. And to my colleagues on the day, as you have in front of you, I left you the Bay Barometer. I reported last week on my meeting with LGAG in King George, Virginia, and I forgot the visual, so that's on your desk tonight. So, thank you.
Is there anyone else? Madam City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is comments by the general public.
During comments by the general public, you can address this council for any item not scheduled for a public hearing. So if you came to speak about removing the dock in Market House- and Market House Enterprise Funds, that hearing will be immediately following this. Nobody was signed up in advance to speak, if you'd like to address the council, now is your opportunity. Seeing no motion, I declare comments by the general public closed. Madam City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is approval, approval of the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar include the following: Journals of Proceedings, CCM 030617, Special Meeting Minutes, Closed Session, CCM 031317, Regular Meeting Minutes; Confirmations, ID 10517, Confirmation of Patricia A. Hopkins, Human Resources Manager, ID 10917, Confirmation of Maria T. Broadbent, Office of Environmental Policy Director; First Readers, O-2017, Transportation Network Service Companies, O-2117, Annual Operating Budget Fiscal Year 2018, O-2217, Capital Budget Fiscal Year 2018, R-1517, Position Classifications and Play Plan and Pay Plan, R-1617, Capital Improvement Program Fiscal Years 2018 through 2023, R-1717, Fiscal Year 2018 Fee Schedule Effective July 1st, 2017, R-1817, Fiscal Year 2018 Fines Schedule Effective July 1st, 2017, and on second reader, we have R-617, Naming the Parking Lot at Newman and Compromised Streets, and R-817, Filing of Grant Application with the Maryland Transit Administration.
Is there any item council member would like to have removed from the agenda? Alderman Littman?
ID 10917.
All right, is there anything else? Okay, hearing no other changes, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as amended. Second. Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir, Mayor Pan ladies?
Aye.
Orderwoman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Littman?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
Aye.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Budge?
Aye.
Alderman Pan?
Aye.
Orderwoman Finn Delcharl?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Madam City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is Business and Miscellaneous, beginning with GT 917, A Transfer From Salaries, Benefits, Rent and Leases, and Vehicle Replacement Transfer to Purchase of a Patrol Boat.
Is there a motion to approve the budget transfer?
So moved.
Second. Second. Discussion? Alderman Littman?
Very briefly, I'd just like to let everyone know that we had Environmental Matters Committee meeting on Thursday, as discussed last Monday, we got a lot of good information from the current Harbor Master and her assistant, as well as Chief Simmons. We were, had a chance to ask the various questions that were raised by a former Harbor Master of Walters, I felt like the committee got more than adequate responses, and the committee unanimously favorably for this GT.
Thank you. Any other discussion, comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? The ayes have it. Madam City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is Public Hearings, beginning with Ordinance O-1917, Removing Dock and Market House Enterprise Funds for the purpose of removing the requirement that the annual budget shall contain separate Dock and Market House Enterprise Fund Groups.
And nobody was signed up in advance to speak, if you'd like to address the council on this subject, now is your opportunity. Seeing no motion, I declare the public hearing on O-1917 closed. Madam City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is a proposed motion to reconsider O-1217.
Is there a motion to reconsider O-1217? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reconsideration, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion to adopt O-1217 on second reader? We've moved to reconsider, now we have to move to approve it. So moved.
Second.
All right, on to discussion. There's three amendments, there's the proposed Finance Committee amendments, there's the Budge proposed amendment, and the Littman proposed amendment, and I'll let the sponsor speak to them in that order, first being the Finance Committee.
So, for anybody that's looking for it, if you go back to last week's meeting, it's probably the easiest way to find it, that's on 327, and then scroll down to the bottom, and you have last week's packet for O-1217, with the original ordinance, all the information's still there.
It was the amendment to, to change the date and make it beginning with the next term of the council.
Sure, so, I'll be after the Finance Committee, the discussion that happened before the last meeting was related to the provisions about the city manager's salary, and there was, a question in the drafting that seemed to apply the enactment date, so if we can... Is this, is this still in the packet? Or was it a hand, hand copy?
So it was the amendment again, after, beginning of the...
Yeah, yeah, so, just for the purpose of this discussion, we could, I would offer an amendment that basically says that the, the line, was at the last point, right?
Point of information.
Page five, line eight, should be stricken and read, this ordinance should take effect at the, at the swearing in in December of the next term.
Is there a motion to adopt the amendment?
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The next amendment is the Budge proposed amendment, is there a motion to adopt that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Point of information, please.
Orderwoman Finlayson?
Yeah, I'm not finding all the attachments, could I get a brief summary of what that, are they all, okay. Got Joe's, thank, thank you.
I just wanted to say, when you recons, when you make a motion to recons, to reconsider legislation, we have no way, we have no way to know whether it's going to pass or not, and it wasn't a part of your original agenda, so we can't upload it once we get here. So that's, and Jacqueline put a copy of the information on your desk, or send it in.
So, answering Orderwoman Finlayson's question and concern, it is on paper in front of my amendment, as well as Alderman Littman's, are printed out on your dais and your desks, but for the benefit of the folks in the room and watching at home, my amendment is to revert the proposed salary for city council members from fifteen thousand a year to, back to thirteen thousand five hundred, which is what it is now.
Discussion? Alderman Littman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I voted against this motion last week, and I, after giving more thought to the reasons offered for and against, I've changed my view. As you'll hear from me a few times tonight, I think our compensation structure for the city, for the top tier of employees is too high. I don't think that same evaluation should be, could be said about the city council members. I don't think anyone here could be accused of voting themselves a raise, because this, this issue applies to the next term, although some of you are running for reelection, and if you're successful, it'll apply to you, we don't know who's going to be sitting in these chairs, I know that it won't be me. I do know that fifteen thousand dollars for the work put in, for the expenses incurred for various meetings, banners, as Alderman Arnett was telling me before this meeting, for trainings, I am, I'm very comfortable with the, the stipend or salary, or the pay, whatever you want to call it, fifteen thousand dollars for each of the councilman positions.
Alderman Arnett?
I would echo what I thought was a very sage comment from my colleague Alderman Pfeiffer, which is, why do we go to all the effort of appointing a commission, particularly when this is such an awkward thing for us to deal with, and then ignore the recommendation? I, I'm very comfortable with what the commission recommended, and would prefer to go with what the commission has recommended.
Orderwoman Bronnik Pindell Charles?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to respectfully disagree with my colleague in Ward Eight. I don't take a no vote based on what the commission has given us as an affront to what they've done. I liken it to preparing for a case and going to court, and you spend hours and hours and hours preparing, you make a recommendation to the judge, and the judge discounts everything you say. To me, that's not a personal affront, to me, that's just something that happened, and that's just my personal view, so I applaud the commission for the work that they did, but I don't take it as negating or dismissing what they did, or disrespecting what they've done. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed?
No.
I believe the ayes have it. Third amendment is the Littman proposed amendment, is there a motion to adopt? Is there a second? Alderman Littman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a, a proposal in the legislation to raise the floor of the city manager's salary from one hundred and twenty thousand to one hundred and forty thousand, the, and that's just the floor. The current city manager makes one hundred and thirty thousand, the current city manager has not asked for a raise. To me, the first rule of common sense compensation is, don't give someone a raise that they don't want, they don't ask for. So in setting, raising the floor from one hundred and twenty to one hundred and thirty means that should this city manager decide to stay at the salary, we don't need to give him a raise that he doesn't ask for. I think in practicality, the range will often start above one hundred and thirty thousand anyway, I don't think we need to jump right to one hundred and forty thousand, I think it should be market dictated, I think the market should dictate what our salary ultimately ends up being, so I don't see the need to raise the floor, my amendment changes the floor from forty to thirty.
Any discussion? Alderman Pan?
Is the top of the pay scale the same?
It is, and as, it was recommended to stay the same by the commission.
So it can get up to one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Thank you.
Alderman Budge?
While I support Alderman Littman's amendment, I would just like to add, I'm glad I don't work for you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
I believe the ayes have it. Is there a motion to adopt O-1217 as amended? On second reader. Second. Is there any discussion?
I want to make sure I know what you're doing.
Thank you.
We are voting on eight twelve seconds here. As to the, to the discussion that we have now changed the amendment to the city manager's... The amendment to the city manager's salary, which was going to raise it, the base from one, to one hundred and forty thousand from one hundred and twenty, and now it's raising the base from one hundred and twenty thousand to one hundred and thirty thousand, and that is the only change that... And the effective date, right, at the end of the legislation.
That is correct.
Thank you.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Is there a motion to adopt O-1217 on third reader?
Second.
Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Pan ladies?
Aye.
Orderwoman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Littman?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
Aye.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Budge?
No.
Alderman Pan?
No.
Orderwoman Finn Delcharl?
No.
The ayes have it. Madam City Attorney? Would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is ID 10917, Confirmation of Maria T. Broadbent, Office of Environmental Policy Director.
All right. How long have we haven't done a confirmation hearing in a long time? So Alderman Littman, since you did this, how would you like to proceed?
Well, I don't think I should be introduced in the confirmation hearing, but I will take the opportunity to explain why I asked for it to come up with consent, if you'd like. I've had the opportunity to work with Ms. Broadbent before I was on the city council, I enjoyed working with her then, I've had the opportunity to work with her on the city council, I've enjoyed working with her then, I've always found her to be professional, helpful, and nothing I have to say tonight is any mark against her as her, as a professional, as a person, and although I don't expect to endear myself to her with these comments, they're nothing personal to her. You've each heard me raise on, on, many years now, in many positions, when we talked about my proposals in years past, that we don't need to pay an ombudsman so much, we're still paying close to a hundred thousand dollars for an ombudsman, we pay approximately a half a million dollars for the top three positions in Department Recs, we pay an awful lot of people an awful lot of money, and I just think this is another example where we just pay too much for position. We are, this position after, after this person's career with her various steps that she has earned, and I don't blame her for taking advantage or, or having the system benefit her, but it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a physician that manages very few people. I don't think, as you, as you would guess, I'm certainly not going to suggest environmental policy is not important, I think environmental policy is extremely important, as in, as is each of our director positions, this is not a matter of how important, but in my mind, when you're evaluating a compensation structure for an organization, you start with who has the most responsibility and who manages the most number of people. City manager, finance director, your lawyer, had, among the most sense of responsibility. Your chiefs of fire, your chiefs of police, your director of public works manage the most people. Those positions should be paid the most. The other positions, while very important, shouldn't be paid more than those positions, and that's what we have before us. So it's not, like, again, I can't, can't emphasize enough, this is not a comment against the person who sits in the chair, just like my comments last week weren't against the person who sits in the, other chairs in previous years, it's not an attack on the individual, we just have a cockeyed compensation structure in the city. I just, as much as I like Ms. Broadbent, as much as I think she does a fine job, is a professional, represents the city well, I just can't for myself to, to vote for a, an office of environmental policy director at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, when I know up and down Forest Drive, I've talked to business owners, make far less than that with far more at stake, personal debt, personal guarantees, no, no guarantee of compensation, I realize people, different, people make different life choices, and that, that leads to where they are, I just, I just can't for myself to vote for that salary, that person, that position.
Alderman Arnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I welcome the opportunity to discuss this particular point, and I think only Orderwoman Finlayson and I can speak to the, the long history of this, but under the Moyer administration, there was a movement to raise the salary of all the department heads to the same level, and a good part of the rationale for that was because the female department heads all earned less than the male department heads, and we subscribed to this at that time, I did, and I believe you did too also Sheila, to that kind of parity, and I still believe that we should compensate people fairly and with recognition of the work they do rather than their gender. The reason that I'm concerned about this position is, I really would like to have a stronger sense that this position is really working. I'd really like to have a stronger sense that this Broadbent is really included in all the discussions across department heads, and really is being afforded the ability to coordinate environmental matters across planning and public works in particular, but I think across the city writ large, and I'm not particularly comfortable that I know that that is working, and I would, I would like to hear more about that either tonight, or if we can't do that tonight because it's such short notice, I would prefer to defer this, unless there's some time sensitivity that I'm not aware of, until we can have that dialogue. I believe very strongly that having good coordination across departments for any reason is the right thing to do, but particularly with... is the right thing to do, but particularly with environmental matters, which I believe often get left out in the day-to-day chugging along in, in each of the departments, thinking about their business at hand and not necessarily coordinating across departments. So I would, I would surely welcome having a report probably appropriately from the city manager. I'd like to suggest that there be a dialogue at the environmental matters committee where we assure ourselves that this kind of coordination is happening and is happening with ease and facility. And then I think I'd probably be ready to go ahead and vote for this. But I, I do think that there's a need for some more information, make sure things are working the way they're supposed to work.
I think that's a fair request. Seems to be concern from our council members, so you suggest postponing to a date certain or?
I guess I would leave that up to the administration's sense of, we would at least need to, I would prefer, and I'll speak to the chair of the environmental matters, I think environmental matters at a minimum would, should take this up and evaluate and talk about and hear, and possibly other committees want to hear that as well. And so, wait a minute, we're not talking about you. We clearly have to do this before we pass the budget, but I would say for the, it could be the next council meeting or the council meeting after that, depending upon people's schedules.
I certainly respect that and the wait to wait for more time, but we do have three colleagues that have been patiently waiting, so if you would indulge them for a second. Alderman Pan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree with most of what I've heard from both of my colleagues. I, I think however, that I'm more concerned about somebody's responsibilities, not how many people they have working for them. And I, I had some questions, which I hope can be answered at Alderman Arnett's suggestion. I mean, how are her responsibilities different from what they were when she was head of DNAP? Or are they the same? I, I don't know that. I've got several questions along those lines. I have no doubt what, in my mind, she's done a superb job. I have no problem whatsoever in, in voting to approve the salary and the position. I, but I do have some questions and I think that my colleagues are, are saying the right things, as far as I'm concerned, they are.
Thank you. Alderwoman Pindell Charles?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank Ms. Broadbent for the work that she's done. I think people who come into a director position or any position, come in with a certain expectation. And some of that expectation, and I respect Alderman Lippman's comments, some of that expectation oftentimes is salary. And that goes for everybody. We base what we do on our salary. Now, if we move on to another job in another place and that salary is lower, then there's a certain expectation that we won't be able to do possibly what we did before. I think it, it would be totally disingenuous of us to lower our salary. Now, I've been in a situation where you go from one position to a brand-new one. Ms. Broadbent's been in this position not quite a year. It takes time to kind of flush it out, see where you are, get your foot in, make certain relationships with other directors in a new position. It takes some time. And I agree with you that we need to explore that. But as far as lowering her salary, I will say I would not be able to get up tomorrow morning and look myself in the eye, being a lifelong government employee, to vote on Ms. Broadbent's lowering of salary. I can't do that. We all have our levels of where we can go. I can't go there. And that's just a personal thing with me. I've been in positions where I worked like a dog and got pretty much bitten, and other positions where you didn't work as much and you got more. And that's just kind of levels out the playing field at some point. You take your job seriously, you have your passion, no matter what that job is, or no matter what you're getting paid for. But you put into that job what you believe. She has a great deal and a breadth of, of environmental, and that's not necessarily my area. I did it for a few years at natural resources, but she's parlayed that into being extremely helpful to all of us. And as far as Gump said, that's all I've got to say about that.
Alderwoman Finlayson?
Yes, thank you. I would like to remind us that about a year ago, this administration chose to eliminate two directors. Just happened to be two directors or two departments that were headed by women. Alderman Arnett is absolutely correct. Two administrations ago, we worked very hard and were able to reach parity so that all of our directors would be paid fairly and equally. All of our directors, and Ms. Hopkins is sitting in front of us, and she's one of those people who was taken out of her position and given another title. They came with credentials. And so if we're going to look at and evaluate our employees, we have to look at what they came to us, what skill set and what credentials they brought to the table to begin with. Everyone has worked, or most people have worked here, and Ms. Broadbent, I feel terrible by having this discussion publicly, but she brought considerable experience with her. We probably paid her on the low side when she came in, but thank goodness we had passed the legislation so that she couldn't be lowballed. So I would just warn us to not go backwards, to not make any more missteps. And while we like to think that gender equity is not a problem anymore, we need to work hard to make sure it's not in the city. We cannot have people writing their own job descriptions. Mrs. Ms. Broadbent, I'm sure, and Mr. Andrews can attest to this, has a full plate. And I trust that she's going to share that with you in whatever process, and I'm not opposing any process. But I would just like for us to remember that we set this in, in motion. And so we've got to be very careful to not penalize the people who are actually doing the work. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a comment to make in response to Alderwoman Finlayson. I'm extremely disappointed, although not surprised at your comments trying to allude that this administration is somehow unfair to women with the elimination of those two departments. As you know, during this administration, previous ones, there's been reorganizations and positions held by men and women have been reduced. In terms of the actual position, which was Department of Neighborhood Environmental Programs, there's a hundred and fifty-seven cities in Maryland. Annapolis was the only one with that. And the county and other places, inspections and permits and planning and zoning are frequently combined. You'll also note that MIT is under the office, was headed by a man and was reorganized as well. So it wasn't just women, and I would highlight that we hired the first female harbor master in three hundred years of Annapolis. Our economic development coordinator is a female and my chief of staff is a woman. So I take personal insult when you try to highlight an action that you don't like, such as elimination of department, to make it about inequality. So I'm just disappointed with that. Alderman Budge?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Just first of all, a point of information, we are debating the postponement of this appointment, right? Or this confirmation, correct? I would like to point out to my colleagues that this appointment or this confirmation is a binary decision. Either thumbs up or thumbs down, we are not being asked to amend the salary level or anything like that. The, if we wish to have a lower salary, the only way we can do so is to turn down this appointment and go find a new director of environmental policy. I think that Director Broadbent has served the city extremely well at, with her expertise in environmental knowledge and policy over the last many years. And I see no reason why we should not endorse her appointment tonight. The questions that my colleagues have raised about the salary structure of the city, of the senior executives in the city, as well as the coordination between Director Broadbent's, Broadbent's department and other department heads are both matters that bear further discussion, but I think holding up her appointment for the sake of doing that is ill-advised.
Alderman Kirby?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm, I'm sort of right there with Alderman Budge and, and some with Alderman Finlayson also. Whereas we, we decided to do a reorganization and it, it's, right now, it's simply a matter of, I don't, with the reorganization, whether she does more work, less work, I don't think that's a big issue here. It's confirming her or not confirming her based on some things we've heard here tonight. I believe we hired her at a certain salary with a certain skill set, as Alderman Finlayson said. And I think that until she determines to leave us, we might want to look at the next person's salary coming in, but I, I think we need to retain her as is and confirm her this evening.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
I would just, I guess we're approaching the point where everything there is to be said has been said, just not by everybody. But I, I would piggyback on what Alderman Budge said. I think the, you know, in the time I've been on the council, I think there has, we've done this a number of times, confirming department heads. I think there's been once or twice where the person has failed to get confirmation, Mr. Mayor, you know, early in your administration, the city attorney nominee, and where it appeared on the, appeared on the, on the agenda for a couple of meetings and it was never a thing. And I think, I think that, those circumstances are rare. And all these, the questions that Alderman Lippman and Alderman Arnett are raising about sort of how the environmental programs are working and, you know, is, is this a, a good value proposition, those are probably better conversations for the budget process that starts tomorrow in the finance committee and start to try to figure that out and get, get our handle on what we did two budgets ago or one budget ago and how it's working. So, so my sense is this is much more like every other department head and as Alderman Budge said, it's an up or down vote, and then we move on to how to, how to actually provide the services and, you know, people positioned in the right place in the context of the budget going forward, so.
I appreciate those comments and I agree with a lot of them. The one thing I've learned over time, especially with the recent department heads we've had, they were almost, all of them unanimous. I kind of like to keep that tradition. So if my colleagues on the council feel like they would like more time, the next meeting's April the 24th, that would be three weeks. Certainly is not a problem to me for a delay in that. Alderman Arnett?
A point of information, it's been said a couple of times that it's up or down and that there's no ability to change the salary. I question whether that's the case. Not that I'm inclined to do that, but.
We'll let our Director of Human Resources answer that.
I, I just wanted to offer to everyone, and I hear all of your debate, we are in the middle of a classification confrontation study. That was a point that was brought up before when the reorganization was going through, as Alderwoman Pindell Charles also offered, you know, to make a decision on the grade assignment of a position or to, to do compensation on the fly, so to speak. It's really not a political decision. We are in the process of having a consulting firm examine the city's positions and make recommendations to us with regard to the proper grade assignments, proper tiling, the proper job descriptions associated with all of those positions, including Ms. Broadbent. So if you're, if you have great concern over that, know that we are trying to, we are professionally addressing that through the work of a consultant, and that will be right-sized or, or confirmed at some point in the future. That's, that's to be seen when we get the results from our consultant's work. There's also real language in city policy around how you handle somebody's pay when their position is, is changed, you know, in terms of compensation or in description. And so we would absolutely follow the, those tenants that are already in place for us to, to use and not, you know, figure out what's the popular vote on that. We would follow our policies with regard to that. So that those are put in place to be responsibly addressing how somebody who's going through a change, however means that happens, reorganization or a real need because the job duties have changed and therefore the value of that job is different. We have ways to handle that professionally and we do so.
Thank you. Alderman Arnett?
So harkening to what Ms. Hopkins said, but also taking what Alderman Budge said into account, I still really would like to have an evaluation of how well the job's working, and I think I have some sense that it's not necessarily working the way we wanted it to work when we did the reorganization. But I agree, this is, that's a different venue. So if it hasn't been seconded, I withdraw my motion to postpone.
Alderwoman Pindell Charles?
One last comment I want to make this. In my experiences, in this situation, when we talk about lowering somebody's salary, that's what we're talking about. That was the initial discussion. No, I'm making a comment. I'm just making a comment. Can I make a comment? When we do that, in my experiences that I've seen, you're sending a message to the person that you're really not satisfied with the work they're doing. That's been my experience. I can only speak for my own. And I think, and I hope that's not the signal we're sending tonight. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? I believe the amendment, the proposal to withdraw has been withdrawn, so I guess now we're actually on to the confirmation unless there's any other motions. Alderman Pan?
Mr. Mayor, I have found Ms. Broadbent to be extremely responsive when I called her, helpful, knowledgeable, willing to take the time to educate me, which is not always easy to do, by my own admission. And I. Well, I did it. But I think that, you know, she, she's done a terrific job in anything I've ever asked of her and she's deserving of our support.
Is there a motion to confirm the appointment of Maria Broadbent?
Motion.
Second. Have to ask you, nothing we've gone through, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. Madam City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
Mr. Mayor, I believe the agenda has been completed.
The game's at nine o'clock. You have forty-five minutes to get home. Is there a motion? Alderman Budge?
Mr. Mayor, I have a few questions that came up in the course of your State of the City address, as well as, as you know, we received the annual financial results on Friday, and they're all kind of related. First of all, I was really somewhat surprised to hear you mention that we are ready to start construction on the renewable energy park. Originally, when approved in 2015, the renewable energy park was to be done by the end of last year. If we're starting construction now, this puts it at least a year behind schedule. And I'm wondering if you can comment on why it is so far behind schedule and as we know with public works projects, when they go behind schedule, they go over cost. And so what has that done to the cost of this project?
Sure. The Annapolis Renewable Energy Park isn't actually constructed by the city of Annapolis. You may recall that we're leasing the land to a private developer to put fifty thousand solar panels, the largest in the country. So we get money off of a land deal. We get a percentage of money that escalates two percent every year. Their timetable largely was held back on their part, because again, the city's not building this. It was for power purchase agreements. And since then, Anarono County School System and Anarono County Government have agreed to purchase the power as well. That was a major holdup. And so that's moving forward now and it shouldn't cost the city any additional money.
Okay, thank you. Turning to the financial results, in 2016, I noticed that the. Turning to the financial results, in 2016, I noticed that the administration underspent the police budget by $650,000. In a time when policing is so critical, can you comment on why we didn't spend the resources the council gave you on policing last year?
I would have to bring the chief up to address it. One of the reasons, I think, is people didn't necessarily fill all the overtime that was offered. And I think we were still trying to hire people, you know, serving in the police department, retiring after 25 years, now 20, creates a high turnover rate. So we're constantly, we're soaring to today, in the market to hire new people, would be my initial guess. I don't have the document in front of me, but either the finance director or acting police chief may be able to address that.
I think at first, Alderman Arnett, do you want to say that comment for the good of the group?
Looking at the caper, budgeted was 16 million. Actually spent was 16.6 million. So we actually overspent for the police budget.
Never mind.
I think part of the confusion may have come is transferring the 1.25 million, the additional 125, the more money we got from the state.
No, that's this year. This is 16.
Oh, 16.
That was the year before. So that was the year when we started having the uptick in the targeted murders. And we overspent, which I don't think my constituents will complain about too much, but.
I have a couple of other questions, but I think I will defer them until I make sure I have the plus and minus signs right.
Understood. If you could give me a heads up in advance, I can prepare the answers for you and check with our finance department. So thank you. Alderman Littman?
It's been custom, indeed, including your custom, to provide the council with a written printout of your statement. I did not receive it. I don't know if anyone else did. But are you going to be providing us with a written summary of your speech?
I can certainly have that printed for you. I believe it was emailed to everybody at the time I spoke. If it wasn't, I'll make sure you have a hard copy.
Along those lines, when should we expect the actual hard numbers of the budget submission?
I think you should have now, Bruce. Director Miller?
Yeah, it would be helpful to get your comments.
Sure. Traditionally, the way it's done is we send it out to all the media publications in the council right when I start the speech along with the information. So I'll make sure you have that.
Thank you. I just confirmed with staff that it will be online this evening. So you'll see the full document. Thank you.
There's nothing else? We still have 35 minutes to catch the game? I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Actually, I believe it's 9:20 to tip off. So we've got plenty of time.
Yeah.
However.
I'd like to introduce some new legislation.
I would move to adjourn quickly before we think of anything.
Is there a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it.